Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Select Board meeting of Tuesday, April 9, 2024. Being the time of seven o'clock, we will call this meeting to order. If we could all rise for questions.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is the Muffin House. Come forward real quick. We won't put you on the spot for too long.
Sure, that's okay.
I have lots of questions.
All right, yep, right over here, please. If I assume everything's like ready to go?
Yes, everything on our end is good.
All right, want to give us an update of when we're opening or what we're anticipating?
Well, I knew that question was coming because that's the question I get from everybody. Hopefully by the end of the month, our contractors are just wrapping up a couple of things. Fire and electrical inspection are by the end of the week, at least that's what my general contractor tells me. As far as Health Department inspection, we're pretty much ready to go. We're just waiting for everything to be tied up and we're almost there, so.
So any members of the boards have anything to say? I think we're all very excited to have this Muffin House.
Very excited to be here.
Be added to Waffle Center.
Just congratulations and look forward to having you in town.
Thank you very much, yeah, we're very excited to be here. From what it sounds like, the, the community is very welcoming and excited for us, so it's always awesome to hear.
Cool.
All right, and do you have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the request of Muffin House Cafe for common victory license, a license to operate at 907 Main Street, subject to the application, receiving final inspections from the Building and Health Department.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a vote, five zero zero. All right, we look forward to visiting soon.
Can't wait, I'll see you all there.
All right, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item on the agenda, I think we have Chief Barry here to introduce two candidates.
Good evening, thank you very much. Excited to be here before you tonight. I'm here to request you consider my recommendation for two appointments this evening. The first of which is Jordan Bosworth. Jordan is currently working as a paramedic for a private ambulance company as 911 responder in the city of Brockton. He has ample paramedic experience. He's also served as an MP in the Army and I'm pleased to introduce Jordan Bosworth to the board for, to expand upon my brief introduction again and answer any questions you may have.
Hi, Jordan, thank you for being here this evening. If you could just give us, give us a brief interaction and also why you would like to come work here at Waffle.
All right, so my name's Jordan. I have been a paramedic for two years. I would like to come work at Waffle because it's a community that I could see building a true career with and the, from everything I've been able to understand, there is a future as well as just a actual caring about the medicine and caring about the people that reside within the town.
All right, wonderful. Does any members of the board have any comments, questions?
I would just say welcome.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, welcome to Waffle. We're very excited to have you.
Thank you.
A second candidate tonight is, is Ashley Dacey. She's, she's, Ashley presented very well during the interview process with us and she's currently working towards completing her paramedic certification and she's doing excellent in that. She's experienced working as a private EMT for a private ambulance company and I'm pleased to introduce Ashley Dacey to the board for your consideration.
Hi, Ashley.
If you could just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Of course, I'm 22. I'm a paramedic student at Massa Sawyer Community College. I'm completing my last semester now and I'm planning to test within the month. I've been bartending for the last three years to support myself through school and I'm very excited to work for Waffle.
All right, well, we are excited to have you. Thank you so much, we're happy to have you here this evening.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I would, I would just say I was really impressed with your clinical experience and the fact that you've been putting yourself through school and all of that, so good for you and congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All right, with that, Ben, do you have a motion?
I'd make a motion to appoint candidates Jordan Bosworth and Ashley Dacey to the position of firefighter, paramedic.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a vote, five zero zero. Thank you.
One quick question, how about academy slots?
Academy slots, we're still anywhere from two to four months out.
Okay.
We're moving as quick as we can to get them.
Yep.
Into those. It's, it's.
I understand, I was just curious.
Sure, sure.
How long a wait would it be?
Exactly, same, we're, we're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for tonight.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right, next item on the agenda this evening is the MWRA project funding and assistance. Jim, if you want to.
Sure. This is for the, this isn't for the MWRA interconnection, it's for the, it's a sewer grant that Rick and Scott do such a great job each year going forward, applying. This year, it's providing financial assistance of $335,000. 251, 250 will be made in the form of a grant and then the other will be in the form of an interest-free loan for $83,750. So I believe, Rick, we're just looking for permission to move forward with this, an approval?
Correct, this is page twelve, it was voted, filed in, you can tell.
Any members of the boards have any questions on this?
Nope.
All good stuff.
All right, well, thank you, Rick, for bringing this forward. Ben, do we have a, a motion for this?
I'd make a motion to move the forms of votes presented to this meeting be adopted as written and incorporated into minutes of this meeting in full.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a vote, five zero zero. Being that it is a little early for open forum, we're going to move on to new business first. First item is the agreement with the DPW Union.
Sure, so this is something, Madam Chair, if like, that we've been working on for a very long time. I'm pleased to report that we finally reached an agreement with the DPW Union. Unfortunately, they understand this, we will be going, if the board approves tonight, we'll move forward for the Fall Town meeting. As you know, the, the warrant booklet was sent out to the printers a couple of weeks ago and we're just too close to the May Town meeting. So a couple of highlights here, the colers are generally modest, a two, three two five and a four two five. We're also looking at some additional language for overtime to encourage more coverage during snow, snowstorms, make it a little bit more of an incentive there. Also including Juneteenth, the list of holidays, which we've been honoring the last few years. We've changed the longevity payment around, recall that we've reduced from 12 to 20, from 24 to 12 and just some notification on if they're going to be out for an extended period of time during the summer months. So a modest agreement, but I'm glad we've got there. So looking to probably get this on the Fall Town meeting warrant and so we'll have to factor in the retro pay and everything else and likely the first pay period in November is when we'll finally be caught up in this.
Well, I know this is taking quite a bit of work, so I appreciate you bringing this forward to us. Anyone have any specific questions on this one?
I would just say, thank you for your perseverance on this, Jim. I know it has been a long road and I'm glad we've finally gotten to where we need to be.
Thank you.
Same, I'm glad it's settled, so that's good.
All right, without any comments or questions, Ben, do you have a motion on this one?
I'd make a motion to sign the memorandum of agreement with the DPW Union.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a vote, five zero zero. Thank you, Jim, again on that one. Next item is a bid contract for the School Meadow Brook culvert replacement.
Sure, so I know Rick's here, we probably had a little bit here, but I'd recommend favorable action for bid contract number 24-15 to be awarded to New England Building and Bridge Co. based in Providence, Rhode Island. This is something that we've been working on for some time and I'm glad to finally see it underway. So anything to add, Rick?
No, we received eight bids, the, the range was very wide. Quite frankly, we were concerned when we opened the first bid.
Yeah.
And they progressively got lower from there. Thankfully, Weston and Sampson had always carried a figure of 600,000, so we feel comfortable in awarding the contract.
Let's ask, Rick, what does the project entail? I know the culvert underneath, but is the bridge itself going to be disrupted?
Uh, no.
No, okay, the bridge is fine.
Just in, just in the general area of the existing culvert.
Yep, okay, gotcha, good, great.
Right, any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, because there was a wide range of bids here. What was it about the, the most expensive bid that made it most expensive? What jumped out at you?
My, my guess is that the companies that had the very high bids probably didn't want the job.
Want the work.
They just threw a number at it and if they got it and they were successful.
Yeah.
Then they would have probably hired additional crews.
Got it, okay, thank you.
All right, and do you want to move forward with a motion?
I'd make a motion toward bid contract 2024-15 to New England Building and Bridge Company, Inc.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a vote, five zero zero. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
So we have a few items, we'll go on to unfinished questions, we have a few more articles for town meeting to vote on this evening.
Sure, so the two remaining articles are the zoning bylaws that have been proposed. The first one is Article 12, which is the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw. FinCom considered this last evening, they voted favorable action, 10-0-0. The Planning Board had their public hearing back in March, they voted favorable action on this article also, I believe it was 5-0-0. And, yes, five zero, and so I'll take any questions you may have. The highlight of this one is this is something that we've been working on for some time now. Patrick and I kicked around some ideas over the summer about possibly, last summer, about trying to in some way stay ahead of the upcoming building that's coming into Waffle. The thought here was Mansfield used a similar bylaw, was passed and it was approved by the Attorney General. Basically, any condos or apartments over six units require an affordable housing component of that, so it just allows us to continue to keep up and, you know, take a step in the right direction.
I'm really excited that we have this moving forward. I think it's a really important part of our, as we continue to develop and Waffle have something, so. I'm really pleased with how this came out. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I would just agree with that, I think this is the right article at the right time. I know we've been discussing it for years and hopefully this will pass at town meeting, so looks good.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, so I would make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 12.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a vote, five zero zero.
And last remaining article is Article 13, which is the MBTA Community Zoning Bylaw. This article was passed last night at FinCom with a vote of nine to one, nine one zero. It was also passed at the Planning Board last Thursday evening, which was well attended by a vote of two, one, two. So basically, again, we've talked about this for a few years at this point. We're basically, we formed the Steering Committee. This is what their recommendation they pushed forward and it's focused on the downtown district as an overlay. I'll take any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? I know there was a little bit of, I did watch most of the Planning Board and there was a little bit of discussion on that. Any significant changes since the last time that we've seen this?
No, actually, we substituted the word shower in a couple of places. Town, the Attorney General came, we're back with some changes they requested, minor, very minor. And Town Council had a few small recommendations, so Finance Committee voted. What you have in front of you is what the motion, Finance Committee voted on, which will be presented to town meeting. A copy of this motion will be included in the packet and Dan always sends out the motions on his own to town meeting members, so everyone will have it well ahead of time.
And I think the, some of the recommendations we made at a meeting, I don't know, probably over a month ago, as far as the map goes, it seems that those were kind of taken into consideration as well.
Sure, and also as part of the packet, we'll have the map, we'll have frequently asked questions, we'll also have the PowerPoint presentation that Patrick put together, cover memory and the motion, so. Can't say enough good, good things about the work Patrick Gushadston did on this thing.
I was about to say, Patrick's done an excellent, excellent job moving this forward and working with the Steering Committee. Comments from the board?
I would just say one thing, just for the people who are watching at home. We've been talking about this for a couple of years. The state is pushing MBTA communities, of which Waffle is one, to create a zoning overlay basically in the downtown area so people can live and commute easily. And this allows developers to be a little more liberal with zoning issues. So this is the very same issue that Milton is being sued over because they have not filed their paperwork appropriately. We filed appropriately last year and this is the latest filing, so. I, I think that we're being responsible in pursuing this and another good article for a town meeting to consider.
All right, without any further questions.
I'd make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 13.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote opposed?
No, quick question.
Yeah.
If we're set with the vote.
What?
We're set with the vote, vote's set, we're good. Is it the same with Article 12? Or is the language have? The language, does the language have to change for that?
Um, no, Town Council made some change, some recommendations, again.
But that's what Finance Committee voted on.
Town, that Finance Committee voted on, one of her recommendations, right? She attended the meeting last night.
Great, thank you, sorry.
All right, so we have a vote, five zero zero?
Yes, sorry.
All right, and then consent agenda items?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent items as listed on the April 9th agenda.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a vote, five zero zero. We have some minutes to vote on as well.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of February 6th and March 12th, 2024, as presented.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a vote, five zero zero. Being that it is about 7:20, we will take a moment to have open forum. Does anyone here this evening for open forum, please come forward?
Hi, my name is Lucy McNamara. I live at 16 Clear Pond Drive, which is Highlands West, part of the trio of Swan Pond condo associations. And I've lived here probably now for a year and a half, love the town. Of course, I'm being told that I will have new neighbors at the corner of West Street and Spring Street. And as a representative for the Highlands West Condo Trust, discussion is about how to have a variance in the times that a construction company can operate in that area. The particular reason is because a lot of people walk to the train. And most of the year, half the year, it's very dimly lit at seven o'clock in the morning or six o'clock at night. This time of year, wonderful light. Spring Street doesn't have sidewalks and is sort of a cobbley, pockmarked road. Swan Pond does have sidewalks, but people have to cross, have to cross where there's active traffic. And traffic does not hold to the 25 mile per hour rate of speed in that area. Plus with construction and construction people will have more cars. So we're looking to find out how to apply for a variance. Right now, construction can be seven in the morning to eight at night. Eight in the morning to six at night would kind of be nice and sort of fit that safety profile that we're looking for. We don't know how to go about this.
I have a suggestion, I mean, I, I was actually at the Planning Board meeting when this, this item was discussed this past Thursday. Prior to the MBTA, I think they could, obviously you folks, you know, don't have any input on the decision on this particular property, but you could ask the Planning Board as part of their decision to include the, the hours of operation you may be looking for. So that would be my suggestion.
That makes sense. When will that decision be happening?
They're supposed to have a meeting on June 6th, but sometimes people move their items up, so.
The hearing was only opened.
Yeah, it was their first one, so. It's going to.
So this time, yeah.
Very early.
Good, makes sense to me.
That was a good suggestion, thanks. I, I did want to just mention that state law does not allow us to have a conversation about something brought forward in open meeting. I mean, in.
Well, I appreciate your kindness tonight.
Yeah, no, no, so there are often times when we'd like to respond and talk about it, but we can't, so. Jim sort of gave us the easy way that it makes sense for us to, you know, go back to Planning Board and ask somebody to consider it, so. We'll do that, so. That's, that's why we're not having more of a conversation.
I'm, I'm not offended by that at all.
I just wanted to get it known.
Somebody had explained to me some of the technicalities, so my, my expectations were low. But I do appreciate what you've, you've said tonight, so thank you so much.
And we appreciate you coming forward because sometimes there's, there's things, there's safety concerns or someone to come to open forum and bring that to our attention is always a good thing.
I appreciate that, thank you so much and have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda, Jim, is an update from you.
Sure, so just a few items here. Town meeting, we're all just about ready to go for town meeting. You folks closed out your votes tonight. I'm working on the motions with Town Council, I've drafted them, sent them over to her, she's looking them over for me. Dan has a copy of them too. FinCom's set to hold their public hearing on Thursday, May 2nd at 7:00 PM here in Town Hall. Town meeting is set to kick off Monday night, May 6th at 7:30 at the high school. So that's really it, so we're on track for town meeting. Bird Pond Dam, just a quick update on that, just, just before I came in here, I received an update from the architect. They'll be prepared with answers to all the questions that Glenn and Jim both sent in. If you have any more questions, let me know. They, they said they'll be ready with those answers by June 11th, so that's, we're set to meet that evening, so I think it'll work out. We'll be able to have a productive discussion. I'll make sure that Rick and Carl are there too and, you know, if you want to reach out to some neighbors or anything, I don't know. I've had no people reach out to me, I'm looking at you, Glenn, I know you live down there.
Yeah, this is my neighbor, sure, I could get the word out pretty easily. But to have them attend that particular meeting, because part of what they said the last time they were here is that they would actually do outreach as part of this process, are they, do we know if they?
I will ask them to do outreach, we've, with this process, we've kind of had to push them a little bit.
Yeah, I noticed that too, yep.
I did have a couple of people reach out to me and I sent them a link to the video, which you sent to me, which was good, so.
Yeah, I'm hopeful that they can get the answers to the questions back to us in advance of the meeting, right? And particularly to Rick and Carl and some of the other folks. This isn't a situation where we're having like a peer review done, you know what I mean? We're just going along with what they've said and nor would that necessarily be appropriate, I'm not suggesting that, but making sure that Rick and Carl and everyone have time to digest their answers, I think would be really helpful.
So actually, Jim, if we could just remind them that they did suggest, they did say that they, public outreach was part of the process.
Just made it up to myself, yep.
Okay.
I think that was one of the questions that I submitted.
Oh, did you? Okay, sure.
What I want to avoid is rehaving the same meeting that we already had. And I'm fearful that that's what's going to happen, so that's why they really do need to come prepared to answer the questions. It'd be even great if they would submit their answers in writing ahead of the meeting. That way we could actually read them and be now prepared to ask the next set of questions.
Yeah.
And we're here to help.
The people that did bring forward concerns, it was more during open forum when we were not able to really respond to them, which was, made the process difficult, the conversation difficult, so.
Okay. Last item is supplemental water connections, this is something each of you know that Rick and I and Scott Gusserson and Steve Nunneri have been working on for about a year now, year plus. And I finally think we're getting closer and closer to being able to present some options to your board, Sewer and Water Commissioners, and I'd like to include Finance Committee because there's obviously a price tag associated with the options. And I'm looking to get some of the decision makers, all the decision makers in the, in the room prior to town meeting, because I just know this Fall Town meeting is going to be very busy. We're likely going to have a vote on the high school, we're going to have a DPW vote on their contract, a supplemental budget, whatever comes up. There might have some changes to the personnel bylaws that I'm going to be requesting, so. I'd like to get this thing out of the way, know what direction we're going to go in, so we could begin to work on the motion, setting up the borrowing schedule to present to people, so. The options I'm going to expect to be presenting is a supplemental connection to the MWRA for a million gallons a day. A supplemental emergency connection to the MWRA, both of these are via Norwood, that can be turned on if, in the event of an emergency. And a third option would be development of Mine Brook Well Number Four, which is in back of Jury Lane. I'm very close to having prices for all three of those and breaking down the rates, the immediate impact to the water budget and the long-term, 30 or 40-year impact to the borrowing schedule for the water department, so. It's just about, very close to being finalized, so. That'll be shared with you folks, Sewer and Water Commission and the FinCom and I'm looking to have something set up in May or June at some point, definitely before the 1st of July, just so I know the direction we're going in.
And when we met some weeks ago on this topic and we agreed to meet again in early May, I think we also said there were a list of things that we want to make sure were covered for that meeting in early May. Are all those things accounted for in what you just said?
They're all listed out here, so what, the Commissioners haven't voted on this, but what we're proposing is, I'll give you an example. October 2024 MWRA connection, see above, but October 24, water main replacement amount $2 million. Recommended source borrowing, cost per year for the borrowing is like 120 over 40 years, which that 120 alone, I'm trying, I want each item to have, okay, this 120,000 represents a likely rate increase of 2% or something along those lines, so every item will be broken out. If it's retained earnings, the smaller items, I'm recommending retained earnings, obviously they don't have a long-term cost, but, yeah.
Good, all right, thank you.
All right, does anyone have any other questions for Jim?
Route 1A, any word from the state?
Glad Rick stuck around, any?
I think, I'm ready to restart in like the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, last update we got was beginning of April and it is the beginning of April.
I haven't heard anything recently, but the last error was mid, mid April. They should be, they should be coming soon.
Okay, it's just one of the questions I get asked every week, pretty much, so.
They all get asked. And we all can't wait for it to be completed, yeah.
Yeah, and while Rick's here, yesterday, we had an emergency culvert issue on what street?
Pine Street.
Pine Street. Rick, highway, water, all responded quickly, it was after four o'clock. The, the crew stuck around, fixed it, got a temporary fix and we're going to do a long-term fix there.
It's another culvert, another road crossing. For those of you that are familiar with Ganawat Pond, it's that culvert. The inlet and the outlet were both blocked with beaver chewings. They've become a real problem for us. What happened was, we think it blocked on the downstream side, created a surcharge, washed out the gravel along the sides and the.
washed out the gravel along the sides and the top. It's, it's a stone culvert, so like Jim said, we, we performed a temporary repair. There were plates currently on the road, perfect time for that heavy truck exclusion.
It could have been a lot worse, really. I was shocked when he, when I went out there and it was.
A heavy enough truck went through. The police department was actually responding to an accident on Pine Street. They noticed on their way back that there was a large sinkhole on the right-hand side, heading back toward Route 1. They called the Highway Department, Highway Department responded and lo and behold, the whole right side of the street had washed away.
So you put a new culvert in, or a bigger? Or beaver control?
Know we put a new culvert in?
Yeah.
I, I don't know, Glenn, what we'll have to do is bring in somebody to assess it.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, we have to do a little bit more work up there, upstream and downstream, just to bring an engineer in to get a good look at it.
Yeah.
Make a, you know, give us an opinion as to what we need to do.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
That's it for us.
Very good. All right, Ben, I think, anyone want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a vote, five zero zero, meeting adjourned.